Well, that's surprising, yeah. We're gonna, I'm gonna try to, I'll say force, I'm gonna try to push back, but... I'm older than much of the fact she came home from her class, she didn't have to go back or something on like first morning January or something like that. So I see, me, I'm chill, I'm like, I'm like, Becky, I'm like, what's your work? She gets a girl about that, you know, because she's got a premium today, but she's got the more really, I'll let you go out. She's not like a lot of getting dollars, but uh, we can look at it and see her own, but yeah, well, maybe for sure. They left. She told me she was like, straight out of the back, Nick, something like, right, did she go something, yeah, did she go the track? Yeah, that's right.
Look like he got to you.
I really know, I was real jealous of that, he, the, real jealous interview.
I tell you, she learned, she seen what daddy talking about, about that. She's going, so it won't be, I'll be supposed to be doing this, it won't be that, I'm like, welcome to the real world, man, you know? I said, maybe you're working in a town where someone could do some time, like me and Mr. Terry, then you get to her, just tag you. She did grow the question, I think, yeah, they just, they just shift the problem, right? She got, she really didn't. She's like, can we, can we, can we not stop, can we not stop? Yeah, but I get, yeah, 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 so, and then she told me one day, she said, um, when I found out, she said, um, she just talked, she said, you know, she said, I ain't getting personal to you for more, it's like, it all goes for me, or whatever. It's not how that's worked or whatever, you know, but I'm thinking, well, this can only really, really, I say, we just leave cash or take whatever. Most of the time, we can give more, the first track bank says, we're, you know? Now, that, that goes back to, if you're an electric waitress, I think if I'd be honest on there, I don't know how that situation works, I'm like, I put it in your hand and you sort of, report that or not, whatever you gotta do, I think you gotta do. That's right, and that's what we figured that comes up, because there's some places that you look at it and go like, would you, like, it looks like five bucks?
Flowers, if you please.
Yes. Christian Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to say that we thank you and we love you, God, and we ask that you would just give us wisdom and guidance as we prepare to try to move this town forward in the right direction. God, we ask that you continue to watch over our first responders, touch them, keep them safe, God, and give them grace and even mercy for all the great work that they continue to do. Touch us and lead us in guidance and continue to protect us in Jesus' name, amen. And we follow in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
New York City, starting on the end, we have Allison Rickles.
Here.
Next line is Christian Brothers.
Here.
Next is Courtney Woodipair.
Here.
And we have the mayor, Cheryl Paper.
Here.
Next is Tom Adkins.
Here.
And Swayna Tero.
Here.
The, uh, comment here on, um, I implied the reusing minutes, this was informational, um, the council had a number of comments that wanted to be added to the, uh, minutes. Uh, because this is a special meeting and we have one, uh, basic comment or topic, which is the bills. Uh, we, as information, I wanted you to know that we did make corrections and they will be voted out at the next town council meeting. The, uh, the new business is the bills, uh, and so then again, the topic is, uh, bills, both, uh, physical and the credit card statements. And I think if you could start going through and reviewing, uh, what has been put together. And we'll start with, uh, paid expenses for June of twenty-five. And that have not been, uh, seen before. And as we go through, there are thirty-four pages of the bills. And Eric does have in the back, um, all of the bills, um, and their invoices. If there was any specific bill we have a question on, you could pull that from a file and give it to the council member who is asking the question.
Are these bills for June of twenty-five, does this have something to do with, uh, the thirteen hundred dollars or whatever that was in question, or is it something different?
This is the one that y'all questioned, and I brought the invoices with me this evening, it doesn't have to thirteen hundred dollars, like I told you.
But that was my question, I, I know you said that it was accidentally doubled, but this is the breakdown of that one question.
That is the breakdown.
So I see administration, 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 but it doesn't say what it's for.
Those were all, I have over here if you want to see.
Sure, I'd love to see.
And that has to do with the filing cabinets that they park and all the accessories that go inside of them?
Are these garbage, um, things, all returns? So it has addresses listed, listed, and it has, some of them have names, so for instance, um...
Can you say anything about the refunds?
Uh, some of them say refunds, some don't, but my question is, is like, why are we having to do, if these are all refunds, why are we having to do some pay refunds?
Because they moved away.
People overpay, and what they've overpaid, you have to reimburse them when they move.
Okay, so it's not like a fault in our billing system, or we're gonna charge, right?
So the least paid jury accounting quarterly, monthly, and?
Only, only very, only in minutes. You do.
What is, what does, what does they come in for?
They do the ninety-one's and the quarterly tax.
Or that's what they did last week? Water and forty-one's.
Taxes on, on, on payroll.
What was going on at the park restrooms, the repair on the park restrooms?
During, we had the, uh, water cut off, uh, during the colder months, but it still affected a outside pipe. And affected one of the, uh, actually corrected both, I'm thinking, of the faucets in the mail bathroom. That we had to, we had to repair, the, uh, we haven't had any problems with the, uh, park bathrooms here lately. So the park is available twenty-four seven now, uh, since we do have it on video.
They'll get the water meter busted too.
Yeah, so there was a number of items that were broken, uh, during the freeze, and we did have it locked up for a couple of months till those were repaired.
What was for surely law firm firm this month, open record for being nine point four hours? Well, that's a long time to be looking at something for the month of August.
That was, um, that, you remember I told you guys a couple of meetings ago that someone from California put in a public records request? That's what that was, he was, he was doing the denial and the letters to her.
Whatever came of that?
Nothing, because he denied her request for not giving a reason and not living in the town.
And we did find out that, um, people in Alabama, or people in, people in the town, and people in Alabama can make requests, but if you're out of town, it can be, it can be denied just out of hand. And, and as a, some sort of a collection agency in California, uh, we did not see any reason for them to take data from our town.
Man, that was a little pricey, fourteen hundred dollars, nine hours to construct the letter and to do their due diligence on that, that's a lot.
Did you see the letters, I didn't have the...
No, 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 I'm not questioning the word, you know, but I don't know, he, he charges a lot of money for us to have him on retain. So I think we need to take into consideration, maybe identifying some more.
I'm sure we brought that up before as well, to start looking for a board, and I don't think anything ever came of it. If they did look, I don't remember anything being said by them.
Yeah, it's a little skewed. Another thing that I wanted to highlight, looking at some of those bills, um, the inland, the gas card that they were refusing, and this is across the board. I didn't personally see where the gallons were notated, um, I know that some receipts were being reconciled, but with only odometer reading on certain vehicles, I'm seeing like one, two, three, four, five, six. You know, and then you might see on another one, it shows three hundred thousand miles, or it might say seven miles. But I think we need to find a way to accurately track that odometer reading so we know exactly what we're doing. You know, I know we don't have a maintenance plan, but we, we don't even have a clear system, you know, they're putting one, two, three, four, five seats, just typing in numbers.
Those are the credit cards, um, that are issued to the police officers, two, three, four, five?
Those, yeah, on the odometer reading, this is across the park, every department, this isn't just police department, this is every department. I don't know which vehicle it is, for me and my company, I know we have vehicle numbers, so I know that, you know, vehicle seventy-six, you know, has a hundred thousand miles on it. Whoever drives it, they have the hundred thousand miles written, and when they go get gas, they have to type in.
So we need to start putting, uh, vehicle odds in all the town vehicles, too.
And so that was just a concern for me, just on, you know, from an accounting perspective or whatever, so I would keep it in the book there.
That would be, uh, more accurate also for answering as all that, so it's a different way to ask these questions.
Yeah, I, I know, you know, certain ones are doing it correctly, like I know I seen Chief, one of Chief's, it was right, his was correct. But, you know, I have seen some others, when I was looking for who, they have one, two, three, four, five seats, whatever the case may be. On the Alabama power account, why do we have so many bills, like, we have so many separate bills that's coming through? Maybe councilwoman asked, uh, Terrell to talk on that, but I think when she was looking at it, it was almost like fifteen Alabama power bills.
I think it was ten total.
Was it ten?
Yeah.
Should be based off per meter, shouldn't it?
I don't know, it's just crazy to think about, they could just wrap it all up into one bill.
They don't. I get three, I get three power bills in my house? When you say per meter, what do you mean by that, like, you should have, how many, how many do you think you should have, I don't know.
Well, it's not, I mean, I mean, it's how many yards per building, like some, uh, wood shop has two meters, the hallbill has two separate meters, the barn had one.
So does that sound right, that, for us to have ten plus, probably, a little bit more, okay?
Yeah, 'cause just the parking lot has two, has the lights on the outside, and it has the box, you know, they'll just be separate.
Well, I saw two for two oh two John Street, like, there was four total, I think there was one that said Park Restroom, Box Cam, and there was two that said two oh two, so is that the old town hall? I guess something like that, I just thought that was weird.
That's on their doors.
That's dumb, I should be putting off. I get that you can't, I'm just saying it's dumb, just 'cause you can't...
What about the Verizon, I know some of those phones, we say that they were off, but they're not off, some of those phones are still on. I called one number and the code enforcer voicemail came on, so, they're really...
Yup, yup, and I'm not for sure we've asked about that before.
I had thought we did turn that off.
And there was one more that we called.
No, there's only one, there's only one.
I don't remember what, I'll go with you.
Yeah, that came up a while back, I thought we turned that off, so.
I, I can tell you, there's one phone, it, believe it's in the safe, and the other ones are jet packs. It's the little things that they put in the police car so they can have internet to operate their computers and everything. They have to have a phone number in order to give them data.
We identified those, but I know for a fact, it was two phone numbers that we called and they both came on.
One of them was Debbie, who is your mom's IT person?
She didn't have a cell phone, she had, my brother paid for her cell phone, her cell phone was a two-two-nine number. That was a jet pack, it had, her name had to be on there for the, them, for her to be able to talk to Verizon about the account. So they had to put one of the jet packs in her name.
So who's that IT person?
It's a police department jet pack, it's a wifi box.
Oh, so they're not...
They're not phones.
IT's just specific people.
So how many of those do we have, Chief? Four? Something to work, the code enforcer is not a problem? The code enforcer, he had a, he had a cell phone.
Yeah, that one was a phone, and it's in the safe.
But I thought we turned that off, to be truthful, but, but we surface that and make sure it gets turned off. It had, it came up a while back.
Yeah, I, I remember specifically asking about that.
And I, I thought we did turn it off, let's watch that again.
It's not, because when we called it, like you said, it, it was a voicemail, of the code enforcer.
And then my last concern on the auto parts in New Brockton. Is that billing or a credit card? Billing, uh, credit card, it was something, it was a purchase made, twelve quarts of oil was purchased at one time. Are we changing our oil, is the street department changing our oil, or? For the mowers, the, uh, tractor, the, uh, front end loader, they, they pull the maintenance on those, yes? They do, they change the oil? Yes, like the mowers, tractor, the front end loader, uh, the trucks we have taken in. So I'm pretty sure they bought a case. I can ask, but that's, we do, we do the maintenance on those smaller pieces we put in.
I think for the invoice, it's eighteen.
I mean, I know what the invoice says, it says twelve quarts of oil, I was just curious, I didn't know that they changed the oil, that stuff.
So is there any other questions?
Yeah, there was a, um, there was, uh, Arrows International, what is that? Is it A U D or R? What is that?
That's for, that's a police officer.
And where they get their shirts?
Yes.
Is side two weight the same thing?
There is one...
Mueller, Mueller, we had a lot of bills from Mueller as well.
Mueller is the one that handles our IT, the marks all their computers, we had eleven stations.
Do we get our ink from them too, or anything like that?
Yes, we do, for the copier, for the big copier, it's on an auto thing, like an auto replenish, when they get the notification that it's low, they send it to them.
So like that invoice, one, two, five, two eighty, the fourteen, what, I seen the, you know, it would be something that would be like seventy dollars, something that'd be sixty. But I just didn't know what the fourteen was for.
I know, I've had to call him a couple of times, on Monday, um, the garbage system kind of crashed, and they were telling me it was on my end. IT guy told me it was on their end, so we did get that fixed, I also had to call him to try to fix one of the police department computers, which, by the way, he said that hard drive is done for.
The police department?
On one of the computers, the one Jeremy's using.
What do we need to do about that, getting the computer?
Mostly, we haven't looked at the, the budgeting, but most of the computers are fairly out of date, part of what we wanted to put in the, in the budget was get new computers for the police department.
Can we wait until a new budget is created? From base? Or from the BS?
Justin, what about the one that was down that was passed, too?
Um, I think we, we did identify one, one of the health bills, one of the health insurance bills, it seemed like it was passed, didn't we, I seen two of those, maybe? I don't know if they've been called up yet or not, but roughly, I think it was the E L G, H I P, repeat, whatever it is.
That is, that's how the, um, when we don't pay on time, that the person's among, and sometimes, you know, if we don't have a forum, our reapproved bill plays, they get paid for it. So it does carry on until next week.
Does anybody have any other questions on the bill portion? Are we still reviewing?
Yeah, I can hear you just a little bit better. I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Second item on there is the credit card statements.
So moved, correct?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, so that was approved of the credit card statements, I didn't hear the motion.
Yes.
If that completes the billing of the credit card statements, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, so can the council comment? We could go to council comments, I didn't tell them we had everything on the bills, that's where I was, we'll go to council comments. I can't think you had any of your comments besides the bills and the credit card statements.
Yeah, I do that one, one thing, other than, on the timekeeping, um, in the payroll, I think Terrell can, you know, add a little bit more on this as well, I think we need to identify a way that our department heads can review the time cards before they go into Eric, so that we can ensure accuracy. A digital timekeeping system would be great, so that when people request off time, their direct supervisor can approve it, and it automatically goes into the system. The fingerprint thing that we got now, they still manually have to write the request off, right? Doing both, and so, we've been having some discrepancies with people's checks because of the lapse of the stuff getting in time, or it's not being there, or just taking the police department, for example, Chief doesn't see everything that he needs to see, he needs to be able to see his entire team's clocking and punches. You know, it eliminates human error, you know, you can reduce admin burden, attendance, problems, X, Y, and Z. If he can see his entire team, when he goes to review payroll on Fridays, or Thursday, whatever it is, he can say, yes, I ensure that this is correct. Then it goes over to Eric, Eric says, hey, look, he gives a one final, a look over, and he hits approve, something like pay court, something like clock a five. And need to really look into something of that.
And I can tell you what happened to Lance's time, it's because, uh, one employee, we're about to submit his vacation time, I didn't know that's what happened, but again, that's what did. He didn't submit it on time, and I had no way of...
And so just to eliminate that, so people are getting their money, because right now, we got some that's getting a check and they're becoming frustrated because they're not getting their entire check. So that's across the board, New Brockton as a whole, and it's not just police department that's getting tired time in New Brockton. So we need to find a way that we can try to mitigate this.
And plus, it would just put more responsibility on the individual employees where they approve their, their time, so if something's wrong with it, it's on them, that they shouldn't have approved it. So I, I, that was a concern voiced to me the other day, and, um, I do think it's really important that they're able to see their own time. That way, it, it doesn't go to Eric messed up, if it's, needs to be changed, Chief could change it, or whatever needs to happen before it ever goes.
That's, that's the hard part, because I look at them on Wednesday morning, after they're looked at, I start processing the payroll, and that takes a few hours to do, so I need it the same day. So, and if I don't have the paperwork, there's no way we, knowing that someone called and said, crew, so...
Yeah, I think you discussed the last, last problem with that, uh, loss request for off time with the chief, and then I think he's got a better finger on it since then, but... Is there, is there a way for, here's a question, is there a way for him to review the time clock information without going through your computer?
You would have to use like, that's why he comes into my office to review the information.
I think that's the something councilman flowers, you get to, there's a better way to do it.
Um, also, is it for the week before? Is it, is it like, so, I mean, they should approve, you know, look over their time and approve it on, you know, Monday, and then it...
We don't pay in arrears.
Y'all pay in real time.
Yeah, we pay in real time, we don't withhold a week.
So you're looking all Wednesday for what, for Tuesday, that?
So maybe it's just... Other than, that's the way it's always been done.
That's the way it's always been done, we, we don't, we don't pay in arrears by one week.
Yeah, I know, 'cause that, that just makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, any job I've ever worked at, like, it, the pay period ends on Friday or Sunday, and you get paid on the following week, that way, in case there are easy discrepancies, it can be taken care of.
The pay cycle ends on Tuesday at midnight, that's when the police officer does his final call.
That's, uh...
And that's why I have to wait till...
So, so if it gets, if the last punch is on Tuesday at midnight, could we not process on Thursday for them to get paid on Friday, or they get paid on, how do they get paid, Fridays? Is it Thursday? Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday's when they get paid.
Since we do the direct deposit, I have to process everything on Wednesday by noon time, so they can get paid on Saturday.
All right, now I think, using the brain trust here, if you figure we need to pay one week in arrears.
I think we can title this and talk more.
Yeah, but how would we do that, okay?
Um, can I, can I, can I make a suggestion there, 'cause that's gonna, your employees that live paycheck to paycheck and are on government benefits, when you hold back a week of their pay, you're holding back a week of their bills. That's something you need to, you know, a little...
I wasn't thinking in the sense of, we can hold that capacity, I was thinking more so along the lines of, we had to buy the bullet that you got paid for three weeks to get us ready, then...
I see what you're saying.
Okay, there's a possibility of working that. So then we could be working a week in the hole, and nobody's missed a...
I see what you're saying, that was my concern, was, you know, employees missing, being able to pay.
That could be why, I mean, that could be why we're working on time, because of people working, living paycheck to paycheck. I mean, I did work at Dorsey, we got paid, paycheck to paycheck.
I'm honestly surprised though, since there's not many people that do that anymore, you know, at these, or at these smaller businesses, you know?
And I, I think it was that way...
We gotta figure something out, 'cause we've got some disgruntled employees, and we don't need to lose anybody else based on, you know, our, us knowing that we got a problem, and the light is flashing, and we're putting a rug over top of it, so... So.
I'm trying to think, we could talk to financially to give us a plan to do that, if we have to pay for a three week period, and then go into.
I mean, financial group rules, we got some, what, what are your dollars, I mean, Amanda, your business owner.
We're gonna keep this up here, yeah, if we need to find, get, maybe our accountant, that ruins our.
Jury.
Jury can give us some advice.
I'd reach out to some fellow man here too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, schedule.
And I, I agree with you just, I'm tired of still doing that.
You, you need to get some of that help from people, just get out the department, you're just making.
Well, the senior center is still handwriting their time in because the system doesn't work.
Well, we'll talk about it at the working meeting. Any other questions or comments? Again, motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
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 Yes.